Here.
The clerk's here. Trustee Barker.
Here.
Trustee Brady.
Absent.
Thanks. Trustee Guzzo.
Here.
Trustee Little.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Trustee Simonovic is here.
She's in the building, yes.
Manager May.
Here.
Assistant Manager Parker.
Here.
Would everybody please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome to our annual budget workshop. At this point, I'll open it up for anybody that's here for open forum. Seeing none, I close open forum. And of course, during the budget process, if somebody has a question, just indicate and we'll allow you an opportunity to ask the question. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to our assistant village manager, Spencer Parker.
All right. So I just want to start off with kind of a brief overview of what we have in front of us. So board members, you've got three different pieces of paper in front of you. One of them is the one that kind of has lots of different colors. That's the official document with all the numbers on it. And that is the official budget that you're approving with the full dollar amounts that you're approving. So that piece will reference it a little bit, but wanted you to have it mostly for reference. That's the first three pages of that packet. The last two pa- or I guess kind of last two pages, four pages front and back, are lists of projects. We'll talk about them a little bit in the budget, but wanted to be able to have these for you to see if you need a little bit more detail or want to see kind of some of the other pieces. We're going to cover stuff on the presentation at a very high level. And part of that is there's been some requests to try to streamline the process a little bit even more than we have done previously. Part of that is the beginning introduction section. So that's going to be a little bit shorter this year. And we'll go through kind of the high level, focusing more on the priorities and the things that the board specifically indicated they were interested in and try to focus at that level. But if there's more detail that you're interested in or any of that, just please let me know. We can dive into more detail if we need to, or if there's more research that needs to be done, we can find that a little bit later. So I want to get into it, but before I do, I just want to say a general thank you to all the many different people that are part of this budget process. This is one of those where I'm doing 90% of the talking, but everybody else has done huge amounts of work to make this possible. So finance staff has done a tremendous job, especially Cindy, who's been a great help in making this possible. And we've got work from everybody in all the different departments that did a tremendous job, as they always do, in putting together the budget requests. And even more importantly, in holding the line on the spending. So as we go through this, you'll see, we talked at the beginning of the whole process about how we're doing something a little bit differently this year, where we're trying to be a little bit more conservative in budgeting and trying to trim the budget back a little bit. I will say the ability that we have to do that is because our departments are very conscientious of the public's money and do everything they can to make sure we're operating, providing the best services we can at the lowest possible cost. So I want to commend them for that and thank them for all the work that went into this. And same thing for the manager who kind of makes sure we're all doing that, is always watching what we're spending and kind of his leadership through the whole process. And then also, thank you in advance to all of you for sitting through and listening to this whole presentation and for your involvement with setting the priorities for the village. And that's, I think, the key with the budget is it's really an extension of the village board's priority. And what are the things that we care about and how do we want to serve our residents in the best way we can? So without any further ado, I'm going to go over the budget. We're going to do a very shortened budget 101. If you want more details of that, the administration finance committee from April of last year, April 15th, is the one where we recorded. There's a lot of detail about budgeting 101, as well as local government structure 101. So if any board members want to go see it, or for the benefit of any people in the public who are watching this in the future, if you want to go back and dive into that, feel free to go check that out on YouTube.
We're time traveling now.
Going back.
Going back what?
Time travel.
For those people of you watching this now in the future.
Oh, yes. Those of you in the future from now, who are hearing me say this right now as you're watching it, you can go back and watch that YouTube video. So we'll cover that in a little bit, but not super a lot of detail. Then we're going to dive into an overview of revenues, expenses, and fund balances. Part of what you do is the village board is making sure that we're managing the finances in the right way and that we're maintaining and securing the public's resources. So we're going to go over that and make sure that you're confident that we are in a good spot. And I believe that we are. I think we're in a good financial position, but we'll make sure that's presented to you. Then we'll go over and look at the items that the village board had requested. So as you recall, back in January, we had that meeting where we kind of said, what are some things you specifically want to make sure get covered at the budget presentation? So we'll cover those items. And then we'll look at other priority items that were identified. And then at the very end, we'll have an opportunity to kind of go through. There's some things that staff has identified that if you are looking to trim a little bit from the budget to increase excess reserves even a little bit more than they are, we'll have that opportunity to talk through a few things that are kind of on that list. Obviously, if we want to dive into other things for different cuts, we can certainly do that, but those are sort of some of the high level ones that staff had identified. All right. So brief budgeting refresher. And this is again, you know, the one where in the past, we spent about an hour diving into this. This is probably going to be about five to 10 minutes. So first of all, we have a lot of different funds, and the different funds can only be used for specific things. So for example, hotel motel taxes come in. They go into our convention tourism fund. It can only be used to be spent on ways that will help bring people into Westmont. So we've got several different funds and lots of different areas. We try to keep our money. If we have extra money, we keep it in the most, the least restrictive, in the general fund, because then we can give it to any different fund that needs it. Once you give it to a fund, it's a little bit harder to get it back. And then the water fund is very separated and pays for a lot of its own items individually and is just sort of handled separately, because the idea is it could operate as a business and it takes care of that. It does pay some money to the village, just like businesses would pay taxes. The water fund pays, makes a payment in lieu of taxes that goes to our capital fund to help fund some capital projects, too. But the main point is not all money can be used everywhere, and that's kind of the key for the different funds. The second main point that I wanted to talk about is recurring versus one time. Basically, the idea that, yes, it makes sense to have a savings account. We would use that money to buy big ticket items or things that will only happen occasionally or, you know, once in a long while. What you don't want to do is start relying on that to make your operating expenses. So ideally, we want the stuff that's going to be happening every year, like paying the personnel for the positions that we have, paying our contractors to do things. That should all be covered by the same kind of revenues that we're getting in every year, not from one-time drops of revenue or from using our reserves that we've saved up, ideally. On the topic of reserves, we do have targets where we say, here's how much we think should be in each of the different funds. And we tell both our auditors and the people that do our bond ratings that we go over this every year with the village board, and you're all good with targets. So that's what we're going to do on the next slide, is talk through these targets for our funds. So by policy, our general fund has a policy that we will save at least 20% of our reserves and use that, have that savings in case we ever need it. That's generally what we try to do with operating funds, which are operating is the ones that have money that come in and then go out. So our IMRF fund, our DEA fund, those sort of things. We try to say, if this is the money coming in, convention tourism and general fund, and the money going out, we want to make sure we've got 20% of the money that comes in and goes out each year set aside. In our capital funds, we've set our target over the last several years of trying to have right about 100% of what we get in each year. And so that's sort of our limit, so that we can always spend it if some project needs to be done. Then we've got a couple of different funds that have their own specific targets. So for example, our vehicle replacement fund is really, the target is however much we need to make sure we don't drop below zero years out into the future. So that's where we're, you know, we put aside a little bit of money each year, so that one year when we have to make a big payment for things like fire trucks or something like that, we have the money set aside. So we look out for the next 20 years and say, what's going to come up? How do we make sure we don't go under for that target? Our TIF funds, really, they don't have any balance. In fact, they have negative balances, as you'll see as we get here, because they owe the village money. So our target for them is just, don't go any lower. And then our downtown fund, we don't have to have anything in there, so that target, as you'll see as we go forward, is zero. In our general fund, the last several years, the village has also said, in addition to the 20%, in general, we really want to have another $3 million set aside in case anything odd happens with the state, or in case anything odd happens with one of our major taxpayers, and we have to dip into our reserves to make operating expenditures work for the year. And I will say, this is a good example this year of why we have it as a just in case. The state has recently, I think, passed something that'll do a sales tax holiday on grocery sales. They say they're setting up a fund, a grocery tax replacement fund, so that it won't impact us. We don't know exactly how that will work. I don't know if we'll get exactly, based on whatever we would have received from our current grocery stores, or if they're going to take some big pot statewide and split it all up. So I don't know exactly how it will work. But as you know, we've got a lot of great grocery stores here in Westmont. And my guess is we get roughly about $1 million a year in that taxes from them. So even if there's some adjustment or split, we don't get quite a million, that's an example of why we have this extra $3 million, extra contingency fund. Hopefully, we won't have to use it, and everything that we would have gotten from them, we'll still get. And the state's replacement fund will work perfectly for us. But in case it doesn't, you've got that money setting aside just in case.
And that goes into effect July?
Yeah, that, my understanding is that goes into effect for the state's coming fiscal year, which is July through June.
Spencer, was there anything done with the motor fuel tax?
Yes. So my understanding is the state was planning to have like an inflationary increase, and they, my understanding is they did not do that, inflationary increase. But that shouldn't impact what we get, because I think they're not going down on it. It's just not going up as it was supposed to.
But do we count on it going up or no?
I don't, I don't think so. I think we kind of usually keep our estimates pretty consistent with what they were in the past. So I know we rely on the Illinois Municipal League's estimates. I think they projected it going up a little bit, but we were conservative and kind of brought it down a little bit beyond what they were thinking it might go up. So I think we'll still be okay for motor fuel tax. And we'll get into a little bit further. We'll see our balance in motor fuel tax. So we'll, really, we'll be just fine for motor fuel tax. Other questioning, any other questions on budgeting 101 kind of stuff?
One really quick question. With that grocery tax, how long are they going to do it, like for the whole year or?
My understanding is it's a year's worth.
Okay.
Yeah, is what I've heard. Now, I haven't read the statute. I haven't read the bill. I've just heard little bits and pieces. So.
It'd be their fiscal year, so run through May, uh, June.
July through June. That's my understanding. Yep. And then trustee Simonovic, just so that you're aware, this budget 101, we basically just said it there as a reference in case people are interested, but we're not going to go through it in depth this time, since we did that, covered that a year ago. So it's just there. All right. So next, I wanted to kind of talk about the fund balance and revenues and expenditures for our different funds. So you can see in the general fund, our beginning and ending match. And that's because as we build out the budget, we want to make sure that our recurring revenue and expenses match. I think it looks like there's a tiny little bit more revenue than expenses, and that if you look at the detailed sheet, you can see that's $540 extra.
Amy, are you on this one?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
I'm good.
Yeah. So over the operating costs. The blue sections at the top are the one-time amounts. So we're, and really, the ones in revenues, listed in revenues from the general fund are just transfers in from our excess reserve fund to cover one-time expenditures and carryover items. So in terms of the general fund, I also wanted to talk through some key revenues. So you can see, we had a little bit of a dip in terms of sales tax during the pandemic. The big piece coming in fiscal year 2020, because that's when everything kind of shut down right at the end, kind of the end of, kind of mid-March through April, we had a big drop. And then kind of towards the, several months later, we started having people going out and buying all the stuff they hadn't bought in those months. And so we saw that's increased. And now we're currently projecting to be higher than we've been anywhere in the last 10 years. And so the green line that goes across, just so you're aware on these next graphs, that green line is what we've received year to date. So right now, we've only received, I think, through, sales that have been done through January. So we'll still see, actually, I think these reflect, I think we may have just gotten those the last day or two. So I think these probably still just reject, just reflect the sales we got through Christmas, so through December. And so this other amount is really just our estimates based on past history.
Hey Spencer.
Yeah.
How much of this, if you had to guess, was, is, comes from vehicles? Most of it? Half of it?
I would say a good chunk of it comes from vehicles.
60% or?
Yeah, probably around 50 to 60%. I can, I will check that and find out for sure.
Is there any, like, thought into, in the high projection with people not being able to buy cars, because we can't get them, they're delayed and all that? I know they've been selling like crazy, but I don't know if anybody's thought about that. Because that's a, it's great that the projection's that high, but that would just scare me that, you know, we can't seem to get parts and chips and all this.
It's been bad, bad news ever since.
Yeah. Not a lot of good news out there these days.
No, that, I will say that is true. I know there's definitely some supply chain issues with that, but I think we've continued to see that, at least so far, what we've received through December, January figures, our car dealers have still been performing pretty well. We're, you know, conservatively projecting a little bit less than what we, or we're budgeting a little less than what we projected, but we're hopeful. But if there is that dip, then, you know, those are the kind of things why we'd say, it's a good thing we've got that extra contingency of that extra $3 million in case there's, you know, another dip like this with regards to those vehicle sales. Let's see, places for eating shows a similar trend where, you know, we can see, again, we're picking up again. We had the little drop, but again, we're doing a lot better than we were, you know, even before the pandemic. So even our places for eating tax revenue has rebounded to a very large extent. So that's, I think, really great news on that in front. I just point out telecom taxes. We kind of talk about that a little bit each year and just kind of see the general decline with that. And that's not surprising at all, because telecom is the taxes on landlines, the cost on your cell phone plans for texting, and the cost on your cell phone plans for talking. And so as you probably know from your own bills, a large portion of the bills come now from data or from having the phone in general. And there's not a lot that people are paying to talk and text. And so of course, the bills for that are going down. And fewer and fewer people have landlines. I will say that there is a new tax that's now available that I think some non-home rule community, or, well, I think some communities have been looking at. I think last we checked, nobody in DuPage County is, but people are asking about whether or not anybody else is doing it. And that's the streaming tax. So there's potentially the ability to tie in kind of that streaming tax into the amusement tax and to say, we're doing a tax on the amusement of watching streaming videos. And we haven't ever really done anything with that. This budget does not include anything for that, but I just wanted to point it out. We've been asked in the past, you know, with this telecom going down, is there going to be another tax that kind of realizes we're now in the 21st century? And, you know, how do these things actually work? So that new tax is out there, something we could look at in the future, but not anything we've got projected in this current budget. So want to talk, the next revenue stream I want to talk about is hotel motel, but I want to first of all, show kind of its impact in the convention tourism fund, where you can see our, the blues kind of the one time, the greens are recurring. So our revenues are a little bit under our expenses, and that's not too surprising because of what's going on with the hotel tax. You can see, we do have a big chunk of blue for the one-time cost. And for that, for this year, the big pieces of that are, we've got some wayfinding signs. I will say those have been included in the budget for the last several years. We'll see if we actually get to them, but we've at least set aside the money for them, so we can do it. And it includes some improvements to the Westmont Center, so new roof, HVAC stuff. The next slide shows hotel motel tax revenue. And with that one, you can see a huge drop in where things are. So we had budgeted low. We had, we actually hit even lower in 2021. So in 2022, we said, oh, we may not have very much, and budgeted a low amount. Fortunately, it's come back a lot. It's still not at the levels that it was previously, but it's doing a lot better than it was. So we're not quite all the way back up 100%, but we're getting there.
And Spencer, you started off saying our fund balance is, it's 100% on this fund, so it's more than 100% of the revenue.
Yeah. Yep. So let me look at that. Let me pull that up real quick. So if you look at our total ending balance, even after we've spent this, these amounts down, it's still higher than our total annual expenses. So even if it takes a couple more years for our revenues to recover, we're in okay shape because of that large fund balance that we've accumulated over the last several years. So we will be in okay shape. Thank you for that point, Mayor. It's a great, great point. And then I just have a note for other revenue things that I thought the board may find interesting about how much we receive in video gaming and then cannabis sales tax. Cannabis, we get an amount because we tax cannabis itself. And then there's also cannabis gets the standard sales tax. And so it's also included in the standard stormwater sales tax as well. So before we move on, any questions on the general fund or any of the revenues or any of those pieces?
We haven't pledged any of that revenue toward, other than stormwater to any bonds, have we?
No, just the stormwater sales tax.
Okay. So that money's, can be used wherever?
Yeah, it can be used wherever, and it's just used in offsetting all the general operating costs that we've got now. Yep. And then to, yeah. So to answer the question about how much do we receive each year in sales tax from vehicles, it is, let's back up. So we get about $5.5 million a year from sales tax on vehicles, so it's just under 50% of the total.
It's a big chunk, yeah.
Yeah, definitely a big chunk.
And I would imagine this grocery stores are the next big chunk to, uh?
Yes, grocery stores are also a big chunk. Yep. All right. In our IMRF fund, I will note that you'll see the recurring revenues are significantly less than the expenses. And that's been intentional for the last several years. We've had a big balance in that fund, and so we've been slowly whittling it down over the last several years. And this year, we're hitting our ending balance, which is probably pretty close to where we want it to be long term. So this is probably the last year where our revenues will be less than our expenses. And that means next year, when we do property taxes, the property taxes for IMRF will have to go, IMRF and social security taxes will go up a little bit. And that means our property taxes that go to fund our general fund will probably go down a little bit. So just a heads up on what is coming with that. So IMRF is currently funded at 94%.
Our share.
Yeah, our share of IMRF is at 94%. Yeah, now, I will say, that was all based on our last financials, which was at a really kind of last April, which was a great time for looking at stock market and all that stuff. So is it 94% funded right now? Probably not, but it was that.
But statewide, the most municipal funds are at 30, 35, 40%. So this is.
Yeah, we're doing a lot better than a lot of the other independent funds, for sure. I will say, our police pension fund is right about 58%. So last, the last measurement period. So that was in great shape as well compared to where it's been previously. And then our fire pension fund, because we started it so recently, it's over 100% funded, and we're in shape with that one. On the water fund, you can see, we're spending a little bit of our reserves on some infrastructure items in the water fund, which we'll kind of cover as we get to some of the projects. That makes sense. But we do like to have a good fund balance with that because we're trying to save up for some big infrastructure items. And as you know, we've had the water rate that was initially scheduled to be each year for several, for the last couple of years to be hitting infrastructure. And then by this year, I think it was about scheduled to start hitting an increase in operating costs, because as you know, costs to do things keep going up. And our costs, our, our piece of the rate, our water rate that goes just to fund our ongoing regular operating costs has not increased in years. Several years ago, we started increasing it to fund some infrastructure, but nothing to hit operating costs. And so we had this grand plan that over lots of years, we'd eventually be increasing it to cover operating costs. We haven't yet. Because of the pandemic, we put it on hold so that residents wouldn't have to make any increased payments due to water bills. As we talked about in the past, we're applying our federal, in, our federal monies from the ARPA fund to be able to cover that infrastructure, so that we didn't have to raise rates for residents. We're using up the last of that this fiscal year. So again, we won't need to raise rates to cover the infrastructure needs that we were planning to cover up through this year. But going forward, we probably will need to raise them again.
Spencer, how much of the expenses is earmarked or set aside for debt retirement? Is it 10% of the fund? Because they're paying bonds off, right?
Yeah, they are paying bonds off. I, I don't think it's anywhere near 10% of the fund. Technically, none of that will end up being expended, because it'll all hit, it will all hit our balance sheet. But I want to say it's like right around, a little bit less than like $600,000. So, yeah, so it's a little bit less than, maybe right around 10% or so, close to that.
So that's a non, every year, it'll be 10% of the revenue goes towards debt retirement?
Yes.
For the new building?
Yeah, for the new building and a little tiny bit for some water mains we've done previously. And then it will go up, because once we build the new water tower, so we've got the water tower, that's the big infrastructure thing that we're applying some of our ARPA money towards. And we'll get a low interest loan through the state revolving fund, at least that's the goal. And then we'll be paying off that for the next several years. So our debt portion of this will increase a little bit as we get into that, once we get that loan through.
What was the total ARPA money?
We had talked, our determination, so we get about $3 million, we've got about $1 million, we've covered with some other general things, and then $2 million for going into the infrastructure.
You can't stump him, Mayor. He knows.
Try it.
I know some, but. The other thing I did want to mention on water, just as an interesting side note, as you probably recall, we had talked about both the county program that was coming in to help some low-income households, and then also starting our water shut offs again. We did the water shut offs this, this month, so shut them off just a couple of days ago. I would say it was quite interesting, and I was very pleasantly surprised at how much less animosity there was than I expected. So leading up to it, when they first sent off the shut off notices, Public Works sent out shut off notices to over 100 people. And it was for over $65,000 that people had to pay to get current enough to not be shut off, which is, I think it's, has to be more than 45 days past due. So, and that makes sense, it's a lot, because this is like two years' worth, since we haven't shut off people during the pandemic. And we, we've been sending out press releases, we've been putting on the website, letting people know it was coming. Some people paid with that, but a lot paid once they actually got the shut off notices. We've gotten a few notices. A few of those people took the information to the county. The county gave us the notice that they were going to send us money, and then has sent us money and paid for some of these people's water bills. So there's a handful that that's happened with. And out of the over 120 that we had sent out, I think, when we got to like the day before the shut offs, we had gotten that down to about 70. Once we got to the actual day of the shut offs, it would drop to about 30 or so. And then, so about 30 people got their water shut off. And at this point, all but six have either paid for it or set up payment plans or in a good spot. So there are six properties that are still, have the water off, and my understanding is three of them are vacant. So, and, and from what staff has told me, there has not been a lot, or very much or any of, you know, belligerent, upset, angry, accusing us for waiting for this for two years. I think there's a lot of people that were kind of saying, eh, I'll pay it when I have to.
Yeah, that was my take. It was, there was that many people, 90 something people that was like, why would I pay the bill? There's no penalty for that.
Right. And they've been getting a little 10% charge for not paying it. But yeah, now they've, now they've paid it and come current. So it seems like it worked out pretty well. And hopefully, next month, where we have the other half of the town that hasn't had to pay it in two years goes as well.
How about the commercial side? Is this including that or no?
I think it was including that, but several months ago, we started shutting them off because we knew the county program wouldn't apply to them. For a lot of these, we were waiting until the county program was up and running before we really started paying the residential. But commercial, I remember, it was a large amount, and it's been caught up, I think, for the last several months. They've been paying and getting shut off if they needed to.
But this is a.
Good shape with that.
Better response than we ever have pre-pandemic in just a normal situation. This is much more straightforward and.
Yeah. Yeah. So big thank you to all the Public Works people for doing all those shut offs and helping us collect all that money. So that's been good. So the next couple of slides are about our TIF funds. You'll notice the beginning and ending balances on these are both negative, because the TIF funds are, the basic idea is, if you put money into it, we can encourage development, and then we'll make more money, because the increased property values go back to fund the TIF. And at the beginning of the TIF, the village decided we wanted to try to avoid going into what's called TIF debt or TIF bonds, where we're pledging what will come in in the TIF and paying all that interest rates. And so to do the little bit that we needed for some initial seed money, the village loaned the money to the TIF. And so we've got a million dollars here and you'll see on the next one, we've got some money that we're potentially going to be loaning. So ideally, once the TIF builds up, it will be able to pay the village back. But each time we've done it, we've kind of gone into it with the understanding that if the TIF doesn't come back to paying off the village, it's still worth spending the money to revitalize the area. So this million dollars was to assist in the purchase of the property for the, what's now, has the Amazon store on it. And I think we can all agree that was a good investment and a great change from what it was. So even if we don't get the million dollars back, it was still worth it, it's still a good change. But hopefully, we can get the million dollars back sometime in the future. I will also say that little bit you see for recurring, the vast majority of that is going to pay a developer, as part of a developer's note, with the agreement that we give them a portion of the TIF money back. The next one's for the central business district TIF. And you can see what's projected here is a whole lot of one-time expenditures, about four million dollars worth. And that's for all the things associated with One North Cass. So it's the parking lot that we're building to replace the parking lot that's going to be used. It's paying to reroute the street at Burlington and then also paying to move the comm ed line. So the village has the money, the village is going to be giving the money to the TIF. The TIF will then spend it and then owe the village back if things ever turn out such that the TIF can make that payment.
Expenses include the share to the school district?
The expenses includes the share to the school district. The school gets twenty-five percent of any revenue that we generate. They can only use that revenue in the school, in the TIF itself. So that would be for capital improvements demanding. It also now, this year includes, and this is kind of a big step for us, this year it includes some payments back to developers because we're at the point now where we're going to have to be starting to pay both the developer of the nine through eleven, but I think now it's changed to, what is that?
Seven, eleven.
Yeah, seven through eleven, thank you. West Quincy, so the Harold's Chicken, Tapatio's, those projects you've just seen. So they're now going to be getting reimbursement from the village as part of that TIF. And then also with the one, West Quincy so close, we are budgeting some money to repay them based on those payment schedules.
All those are dealt with individually with the developer?
Yes.
Where we agree to reimburse X amount of dollars in the future.
Yep, with all of those, we agree to do it. And yeah, our big push is we try to do as much as we possibly can in the future instead of paying for it upfront for a specific development. And when they come to us with plans and they say, here's what we think we need. We have a financial consultant that looks over it in detail, looks at the market and says, here, they kind of confirm, here's what they're missing in order to make this a profitable thing. And then that's how we design it based on each individual project, based on what their actual needs are.
And there's a max, so we don't continue paying until it hit that dollar amount, right?
Yes, yep. We have maximum amounts set up and length of time amounts set up and all those. When we adopt those individual agreements, they'll all come before the board. All right, the next one just kind of looks at overall fund balance targets. So you can see our beginning revenues, our expenses and our ending and our targets. So you can see we're still about ten million or so over where our targets are. Now, as I mentioned at the very beginning, different funds can only be used for different purposes. So just because we're ten million over altogether, doesn't mean that no individual funds have any problems. And so as we look at these, you can kind of see the next slide shows our special purposes and where those balances are compared to our target. Our debt fund is a little bit less than what our target ought to be, which ideally it would be, you'd have enough sitting in there that you could make a full year's worth of debt payment. We typically do that in that we've got our debt payments that come a year after we enter the debt. So the first year, we can start putting money aside to fund, you know, that reserve balance. One of our debts, we ended up getting a better rate if we made our first payment earlier. And so we never had time to fully fill up the debt fund. But as we get to a couple of slides later, we've got enough sitting in the general fund that I don't think that extra, you know, a few hundred thousand is going to be any kind of a problem in the debt fund. And we haven't transferred it in there just because, you know, it's more elastic where it is. And so we can use it for anything we need to. The next slide shows capital projects balances. And I will say the capital fund exactly matches its target. And the reason for that is because the capital fund is a lot more expenses than its target. But we're transferring a lot of money from our excess reserves in the general fund. And the amount we're transferring is exactly what we need to keep the capital at its target. Stormwater infrastructure was a lot more just in terms of happenstance, that it happened to hit the target. We're not doing any transfers to make it up there. And, but stormwaters got just the right amount in there and we're fully spending that with our project. The MFT, this is the part that I mentioned, if our MFT goes down a little bit, we'll still be okay because our ending balance is well over the amount of our target. And so we're going to be in good shape with our motor fuel tax fund. So any questions on that before we get on to the excess fund balance?
Spencer, the ending is for this upcoming fiscal year, it's not the ending of the current fiscal year?
Yes, so the ending, that's...
End of this month.
Yes, that's correct. The end of, well, this, on these slides, it's showing the ending is the end of the fiscal year projected. So in, we expect that if we were to spend all this money, we know we really won't. But even if we did spend all the money we're setting aside in the budget, we expect that by April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, at the end of the budget, this is what we would have.
That's the ending then?
Okay, yep. On the earlier slides where we show a beginning balance, that's what we're saying is the beginning of the twenty twenty-three budget year. That's what we expect to have at the end of April this year. So looking at the end of next April, at the end of the budget, this shows our excess reserves in our general fund. So the first blue chunk is our twenty percent where we say we want to save twenty percent of our general fund. And that comes to right about six million dollars. The next chunk says we want to save that extra three million dollars. That comes to roughly another ten percent. And then this year, the budget, we are planning to transfer, we're planning to set aside enough money that we could transfer out fifteen point eight million dollars to the different funds. We've talked about how four million of that is what's going to the TIF in the central business district to pay for the One North Cass things. We've got about a million or so of that that's going into the general fund. And then the vast majority of that is going into the capital projects fund to fund a lot of the capital projects. And on the, again, in the sheets that you've got, those capital projects are all broken out in detail. And I want to say, starting on about page five, you see the different projects by those funds. So if you want to look at that in more detail, you can see all those pieces. But even after we spend, after we set aside the twenty percent and the contingency and then transfer fifteen million out to these other funds to do these projects, we'll still have another four point three million, almost four point four million, set aside to be able to use for big projects in the future. And it's important because as you know, we've got a lot of projects out there. Even after we get done with the ones that we're currently working on, there's a lot of big ones. There's been talk about trying to do a lot more things in the downtown, for example, or other places. So at the very end of this budget presentation, we'll get to the end where we'll show this slide again and then talk through some ideas if people want to make that four point three million even bigger because we want to save, have even more available for bigger projects in the future. But right now, I think having an extra four point three million to be able to use for future projects is a pretty healthy balance. And I think we're at a, a good place right now. I mean, it's great that even after our contingencies, at our extra contingency, we still have, you know, almost twenty million dollars that we're earmarking about fifteen point eight million.
Spencer, the four million for One North Cass is part of fifteen?
Yes.
And if somehow they don't continue, that would be excess then, right?
Right, yep, that's correct. If they don't continue, that would just be excess until we, unless we do anything else with it.
All right.
All right, so this kind of concludes the piece of overall making sure that you're aware of kind of where we are financially and all that kind of stuff. The next thing I'm going to get into is priorities. So before I do, are there any other questions about fund balances, revenues, expenses, any of those things that we want to cover? In those things?
Next of course, yeah.
All right, so this screen lists the priorities that we have. Over on the right-hand side, we've got this blue section, which are the goals that we're, or the priorities that were identified in our strategic plan, our vision components that we have. So that's governance, identity and image, downtown, economic development and infrastructure. This red section are the items that when we sat down with the board several years ago, we did a short-term priority list and then each year at the budget time, we've talked about, are there any things we want to adjust or change? And our goal is to have five. This year, we had, the last couple of years, we had six because COVID is obviously a short-term priority. So those short-term priorities that were identified, the COVID, community safety, safe routes to school. And then also identified three that were also in the strategic plan, which are the downtown, economic development and infrastructure. So those three are in both the short-term and the long-term priorities. So we're going to start by talking through the specific requests, the specific things that the board was interested in learning about as part of the budget workshop. So back in January and since then, if board members have said, oh, I'd like to make sure this gets included in the budget. We're going to cover those pieces first and then we'll get into other pieces of these aspects of these priorities that we think it's important for you guys to be aware of or that we think you would want to know about as well. So the first thing I want to talk to is you've heard both about village staff in general, but also specifically about the fire department, about the difficulties that we're having in terms of recruitment and retention and some of those challenges that we're facing. And so that's this first slide is a lot of those aspects, both for the fire department, but again, also for village-wide. So the first thing we have on there is the amount we're putting to increase our wages based on increased paramedic stipend. You'll recall from prior public safety committees that Chief Riley has talked about the need for the paramedics and the difficulty in finding them and retaining them. And so this is a piece to kind of add a little bit of value to that stipend that we have already there and make that a little bit more commensurate with where it ought to be. The next line item is an increase in the paramedic contract services. So again, as Chief Riley has mentioned, there have been big changes to what other people are paying their contract paramedics. And so our paramedics could get significantly better rates if they go work on other people's contracts as opposed to ours. We have an updated contract coming out where we have increased that amount so that we can be a little bit more competitive. And I believe that's probably going to be on the next board agenda, I believe. Yes, Chief Riley shaking and said yes. So that'll be on the next board agenda and so that's included in the budget as a cost of almost three hundred thousand. You'll also recall there was a discussion at the last public safety fire committee about some of their other proposals to try to do things to attract some people. And so they had come up with the idea of incentives for things like covering some early trainings to be able to be in firefighters, to be able to have the trainings for that and for paramedics. They talked about providing some insurance benefits for these part-time employees. And they'd also talked about education benefits. And they had kind of talked about how each of these different things may attract different people at different stages of their career and could be useful things to do. So I will say we've trimmed it a little bit, as we talked about at that meeting. This was before we knew where our budget was, where our revenues were and kind of where our recurring amounts would be. So it's been trimmed a little bit, but not to a large extent. And one of those reasons for the trimming is to try to make it a little more consistent with some other stuff throughout the village. So throughout the village, for full-time employees that are eligible for our insurance, if they choose not to take it, they get a stipend, not really a stipend, but they get a payment of about four thousand dollars a year. And so we thought that would make a lot of sense to say, if we're going to be trying to offer a benefit to these part-time firefighters to be more competitive and to try to attract some people, that ties into insurance, it would make sense to tie that to four thousand dollars as well. So instead of the initial five thousand dollar suggestion, we were, what we have in the budget right now is that four thousand dollar for insurance as well as for education. Training, if the costs end up being a little more than four thousand, we'll probably work with that because we want to make sure we can cover the training program so they can get the training that they need. On the education piece, I will say one thing that the village has in our personal handbook and has had for years is that if there is money in the budget, we can do some educational incentives to all village employees. And so we thought that it would make sense and really in terms of estimation, it kind of comes out in the wash, I think, to say that we're going to make this available. Now, we obviously have to write some good policies about it and make sure we're in good shape with it. But that's what we're thinking about doing with that four thousand, is taking that idea, but not having it be something that's only applicable to the fire department so that it's a little bit more fair for other village staff as well.
Spencer, this is nothing, every other community is doing something like this to...
I, I would say there are other communities that, definitely other communities that do an education component.
And all this to keep people...
Yeah, yeah. I mean, most, most places that have fire departments are full-time and so their firefighters get full-time insurance, not just, we'll give you four thousand dollars towards paying for your own. Many, I think some departments and cer, maybe not other fire departments, but I think other places do provide the training that you need. So if there's not the people out there and you have to build the people, you have to give them the training to be able to do that. And so I think some of these ideas are out there to some extent, I think. But I think to another point, a lot of these ideas are a little bit unique and are being applied in a little bit of a unique way because that was your charge to the fire department was, let's come up with some unique ideas of what can we do? You know, what's different than what other part-time communities are doing right now? What can we do to attract more people? And I think the other big piece is we've got to start looking at what other companies are doing too because with the increase in minimum wage and the increase in wages that companies like Amazon or Target are paying now for our firefighters, we're not just competing with other firefighters, we're competing with Amazon. And so you're kind of saying, for the same amount of money and for the same kind of benefits, do you want to work at Amazon or do you want to be a firefighter? And I think sometimes that's a tricky question. You know, if you have to put your life on the line or if you don't, it might be worth a little bit. And so I think that's kind of a good reason why we're doing some of these incentives, even though some of them might be a little bit unique. I will also say that goes into the next couple of lines as well with the compensation study. So we're looking at doing a compensation study village-wide, but it'll have to be done in phases. And with that, we're putting the fire piece of that at the very beginning of the first stage so that we can move forward with that as quickly as we can. And the fire department's done a great job in looking at the information we have with other fire departments and trying to figure out like what would make sense for some comparable wages. But as we're seeing, we're now competing with a different group using the resources of some other people that have a lot more of that in-depth market information is going to be, I think, really critical for putting that together. So that'll be our first stage of the compensation study. But then we've also got other stages that are goal throughout the rest of the village. And we're just setting aside money, that seven hundred thousand dollars is a not-to-exceed amount and we're just sort of earmarking it. I will say, I don't think we're going to, we're certainly not going to be spending all of it this year for sure because the compensation study isn't going to happen in a day. It's going to take a little while to get the full process gone. So we want to make sure we've got that money set aside in case it's needed.
When's the last time we did it? When was the last time?
When was the last time we did it? I want to say five, six, seven years ago, something like that? What was the?
Seven, eight years, maybe?
Seven, eight years, something like that.
Especially what's going on.
Yeah. Okay.
And with everything going on, we need to update this.
Yeah, I would agree. Yeah, so I know that was talked about at committee as well. And then we have the money in there for a general wage adjustment. And this includes a two and a half percent general wage adjustment. However, we recognize that right now CPI is significantly higher than that. And so what we've seen at least another community doing and seems like a really good idea is to do the two and a half percent right now and then take a look in about six months to see where does this really fit? Has CPI stayed high? You know, if it's just a little bump that goes up and then comes back down and averages closer to two and a half, maybe that's a good amount. If it's a sustained higher amount, we want to have a little bit of additional money set aside in case we need to give an additional adjustment in about six months. So we've got some money set aside for that in that way. And the two and a half percent, I will say mirrors, as you may recall, we passed an extension of the union contract with the police officers several months ago. And part of that was an increase that mirrored that two and a half percent at that point, so.
So this number includes...
This number includes...
Extra?
Yes, the extra at the end of the year, yes. And then the last number is really, really small number, but I wanted to put it on there just to kind of illustrate the point that when we're seeing issues, we're not just saying, let's throw huge amounts of money at things. We're also saying, what are some small things we can do that can have big results and big changes? So in this one specific example, it's in our budget that we have for advertising for positions where you would post out in the paper or on Indeed or in professional organizations, we had a grand total of seven hundred and fifty dollars for the whole village each year. And we had run into situations in the past where people would say, boy, it would be ideal if I could publish for this position in this trade magazine, on this professional organization, on that professional organization. And we've said in the past, boy, our budget just won't cover that, so pick one or two. And we're, you know, that doesn't make a lot of sense. Spending an extra three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars if you can attract better candidates and a wider pool, especially in this market, that feels like a no-brainer. But I wanted to put it up there just to kind of illustrate even small things can have big impacts as well. So any question on, any, any other questions on any of these things?
Did we think about referral fee, like a referral bonus for existing employees? A lot of times you get your best staff from people that already work here. I don't know if that's included in like an incentive, but I think that'd be, we do it all the time and it's nice.
Yeah, we certainly could do something like that. I know there's been some talk about that kind of internally, that it could be a good idea. We haven't formalized anything with it, but we could certainly utilize some of those monies for incentives towards that kind of thing as well.
Cool.
And didn't we implement an incentive if a police officer is already a police officer, we, there's a dollar amount, right?
Yes, we did increase the amount that we would pay police officers who... Yes, we did increase the amount that we would pay police officers who come in with experience from another department. Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, should recall, we had some of the same conversations about how do we make sure we recruit police officers? So that was an increase we did. And actually, that change, that was a change in the contract and that was what we wanted to change in the contract. And that was kind of the impetus for that whole change, that small little change we did in the contract with that two-and-a-half percent increase. So they kind of said, you're interested in changing this piece in the contract? We'd like to just extend it and do a two-and-a-half percent increase. And so the board agreed to do that and that made a lot of sense.
Is the payroll for the police department, is that, you know, in the area, there, you know, years ago, there was a reputation that they were the best-paid department in all of DuPage County.
My understanding, I'll defer to the chief, my understanding is we're closer to the middle now, is that right? Maybe a little bit, maybe top two-thirds? Oh, previously, years ago, we were like the highest-paid police force in DuPage County? Like our police officers were highest paid? I think we're closer to like 66 percentile or something's my guess, but you'll, you'll know what it really is.
Sure, so historically speaking, when I started in 1997, Westmont and Naperville were the top two paid departments in the county. And we leapfrogged back and forth because contracts stagger. And I think probably mid-2000, 2006, 2007, we started dropping a little bit. So I think right now we're probably in the top third in the county. Deputy Chief Grun just did a quick compensation study of surrounding towns within the last couple of weeks, probably with 10 to 15 towns we looked at. So we're, we're competitive. I mean, wage-wise, at two-and-a-half percent with the increase, we're, we're, I think that would, would that put us at 108 for top? And then I think like Downers Grove is topped out at 113 right now. So we're in the ballpark.
So it's not, it's not going to hurt you. You're in a good place.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's hard to get...
Good enough place.
It's hard, well, it's hard enough to get police officers as it is and if you pay them well, but we don't want to fall down. So we're so low that you're not only competing with everybody around us for the good quality cops, you know what I mean?
Yeah, we just, we completed our eligibility list. We have 35 people on the list. We have six people that have been identified as, as their police officers in other communities that want to come to Westmont. So six out of 35 is not bad. So whatever they're seeing in, in our community is attracting them. So we are attracting, you know, talent from other, other communities. And it's, I can tell you, I talked to the FOP attorney or representative the other day. And he, he said, very anecdotally, he said that, you know, hey, you got one over on us, you know, not going to send it 2.5 percent. You know, we should have waited. And, you know, kudos to you for that one. You know, but they're, but they're definitely seeing, you know, arbitration rulings that are taking more two-and-a-half or, excuse me, 2.75 up to 3.5%. So the, the, the adjustments on an annual basis are definitely tracking higher in the more of the three range than in the two range.
So next time it'll be a tougher negotiation, huh?
Right, and we'll sit down with the union this fall. So probably August, September, we'll start negotiating for the, for the successor agreement for May 1st of '23. And, and I'm sure the wages that they're going to ask for are probably be, you know, closer to eight, seven, eight percent. And then we'll have to negotiate from there, but I guarantee that'll be their starting point.
And we, we reached a top one in '96 when manager Bocch gave the 7.5% increase.
Yeah, I started in '97, so I, my, my starting wage or my starting hourly salary was $37,000 in '97. So, and now they're starting at, let's start at... Seventy-two-ish, yeah, seventies. So, yeah, 25 is a long time.
We got you cheap.
All right, that's it for that slide. We'll move on to the next one, which is talking about our downtown and some capital improvements downtown. So we've covered the $4 million for One North Cass. The budget's got 3.5 million for the Quincy streetscape, some additional money for a public works employee. There was a question from the board about if we're doing all this work on the streetscape and going to make a outdoor open seating area, we better make sure we've got the staff to take care of that. And so we did make sure we've got that request for an additional public works employee in there, in the budget. We also have some money to, you know, working on Addington Plaza and then some other downtown capital improvements in there as well. So any questions on downtown capital things?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Wasn't there some discussion about like whether or not One North Cass was meeting their deadlines for things? So like what happens to this money we budgeted if that's not going forward?
So if One North Cass doesn't go forward, the money that we've budgeted right now, we're just saying this is our plan of how we're going to spend it. We're earmarking the money to make sure we have it available. If we don't spend it now, we don't have to spend it and it just stays in our budget. So we are careful to not transfer that to the TIF until we actually spend the money. So if we do spend it, we'll transfer it to the TIF, but until then it'll just stay in our general fund. It will just turn into more of that excess reserves. And I will say there's other alternatives we could consider. And I know there's been talk about, you know, would it make sense for us to still do some type of improvements? You know, are there some improvements that still make sense to do? And we could still do those improvements if we decide we still want to do some of those improvements. So like the parking lot, for example, it's already so far along, my guess is we're going to be spending the rest of that money on the parking lot anyway. And that's probably about a million of that $4 million. So, you know, probably there's some of it that we'll still do, but the rest of it, we don't have to do if they don't meet their deadlines.
The deadline, next meeting is one deadline and 60 days after that is the hard deadline where they have to show us their funding. And they have to acquire property.
Next week is final plat approval and it should, find it on your agenda.
But 60 days after that, it's going to be where they have to prove they've got the financing and the property purchased, yeah.
Yeah.
Spencer, the, the 940 for other downtown capital improvements, if that's several projects, then, you know, Mike is here. Nothing, you know, it doesn't strike me as anything big for 940,000, it's all small stuff.
Yeah, so on those other 900,000 or so, I will say a big, so if you're on your, in your detailed packet, if you turn to page five, so kind of starting right about that, right under the Lincoln Irving parking lot where it lists commuter station improvements. So those items going down right till, right after the pedestrian crossing separated, those are all the ones that are included in that 900,000 or so, 940,000. So the big, the big piece is being the $740,000 for the commuter lot improvement and $100,000 for the depot retail space and then $100,000 for the pedestrian crossing grade separated. Now, I will say for most of those, it's setting money aside. So the $740,000 I think is for a lot of our, like our work on the heated depot platform and those kind of things. So depending on what Metro covers, we may not have to cover all of that, but we're setting the money aside in case we need it. Same thing with the depot retail space, so we probably won't have to do that. Odds are it won't be done this year, but...
That's the other point.
Would be...
We're not even sure we'll get into...
Right, it may not happen this year. Yeah, and the same thing with the pedestrian crossing for grade separated.
This one in here though, that's for the design.
Yes, the $100,000 is just for the design. Yeah, and so you can also see that if you turn to page seven, you can kind of see which, which pieces are for what aspect. So you can see that pedestrian grade, the grade-separated pedestrian crossing is just in the engineering two column for $100,000. So to Steve Mays, to the manager's point, it's just for the design, there'll be bigger costs associated with that. So that's the breakdown of what those projects are.
Good, thank you.
And I don't know if you had any other specific questions on those or anything, we can cover those too, but that's the breakdown.
Yeah, no, I'm good with that.
Other questions on downtown capital stuff?
I don't know if anybody came in past Addington Plaza on the way here though, but the arch is in.
Looks nice.
Yeah.
Nice.
A little windy out, so it's still being held up by the machinery, but...
Is it made out of plastic?
No, it's concrete.
This next slide shows a couple of key points that may be of interest in terms of environmental impact. So we've got some money for the electric vehicle charging stations. I think we've talked about this in the past, but we're, our main focus right now is we're building some at village facilities. We're going to start off with, for village employee parking, make sure we understand everything and things are in a good spot. But I think we're scheduling, especially the ones at Village Hall, to make it, once we do want to turn it over to the public, make it an easy thing to do. Is that, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
There's that and we are starting internally, but there's also a lot of federal interest in this. So there will be programs coming out and we just want to be prepared to move on it this year should the opportunities come. We're still looking at it through EIC as well, you know, evaluating those, but this is to be prepared.
Is, if any of the charging stations were to be built at the library, is that something they'd have to fund?
Well, I mean, I mean, that's up to us. So we could, you know, and we've talked about that, you know, and we could make it available as part of our project. The, the energy bill is going to come out of that building, so that would be a way they could participate. But if they were to do it on their own, they'd pay for all of it.
Yeah, well, that's, you know, that's my thought is the, you know, the library is a place where you get visitors and guests. The municipal buildings is, you know, employee traffic or a contractor. You know, if he's running in to pull a permit, he's not going to plug in, so you don't see it. But when you see somebody go to the library for four or five hours, then there's a good benefit there.
The train depot here.
Right, so there's a lot of opportunities for the public ones. What Spencer was talking to is we're, you know, as a, not a benefit, but to, to try this out and do it. It is an employee incentive for, you know, says the guy with the plug-in EV. But, you know, the, the, it was, this, this is not a new question. For a couple of years that, you know, there's been that interest in...
Oh, makes sense at all places, but then that one, you know, the, the grocery store to me is short-term, the library's long-term.
Yeah, these would all be, you know, higher level charging and it would be, you know, like app-driven or somehow, you know, account so you can, you know, dictate the rate by user, just, so when you talked about the public access to them, that would be set up in that system.
Okay, it's progress.
Yeah.
Moving forward a little bit at a time. Steve, do you want to talk through the Peskinelli Drive? I know you had some ideas about...
Peskinelli Drive and for those of you that drive down it on occasion, know that we've had problems with street lighting there for more than a year, going in and out, short-term repairs, and now there's just big outages and they've been out for a long time. It is an office park for those of you in the future listening to this now. The, so the light through there, so the, the demand in the night, you know, it's not a very large, it is complaint-driven, but not like it would be if it was in a residential subdivision. So this needed to be done anyway, there's a lot of underground work that has to be done. It's essentially reconstructing the entire streetlight system. So since we're rebuilding it and we have the dark sky, you know, initiative interest that, you know, as far as whether it's trying out fixtures or, you know, we can experiment with equipment there with, you know, less impact and kind of figure out what we want to do. So it'd be like a, you know, like a pilot, a potential for a pilot area to do that. We have to replace them no matter what, but why not, you know, evolve the dark sky component? Quincy Oak is, is the, is an existing detention basin that has a, you know, grading problem already. Hard to mow, harder, hard to maintain. And we've done a lot of different naturalizing other areas, whether it was in Deer Creek or Richmond and 63rd Streets, all that work we've done in there. This would just be to continue that concept on and make a big weigh station out of it. So naturalize it so that the maintenance isn't necessary. Quincy and Oak to T intersection, but the, everything between that and the railroad, next to the township garage.
I thought it was Womet.
Womet's at the Park District?
No, I, yeah, I don't know, there's an Oak Street there. There's a Richmond and there's Womet. That doesn't matter.
Quincy Oak, the intersection's the low point, it's the sag in Quincy Street.
There's Womet, then there's Oak, and then you get to Richmond.
And it always floods.
There's like an apartment building there, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, but on the railroad side. Actually, next to the apartment building...
And then next to the apartment building, it always floods.
That's ours too. So that's connected to what's across the street.
But that's our property there?
Yes.
That would make a great weigh station for the monarchs.
Yeah. So that one's easier to mow. It is excavated to be, you can call it detention, but it's more managing the flood that's already happening on that corner. And for that matter, the apartment building itself is, they've had water running down the hallway more than once.
Are we maintaining?
We maintain the vacant lot to the west of the apartment building and the property across with difficulty. So that's what those three items are.
Another request we had at the January meeting was to talk about stormwater, both what we're doing ongoing, what we've done in the past and what projects we've got coming up. So this slide shows some of the, again, a little bit smaller dollar amount items that in the past we haven't really bothered talking about, but because they have a big impact, we do want to mention them, about sewer jetting, sewer lining, ditch grading. And then I think we talked last year about doing it. We're hopefully really actually going to be able to do it this year. As we get to the vehicles, you'll see there's a lot of things that are on back order. But we've got, we're replacing a sweeper with a Vector to be able to help with some of the sewer stormwater stuff. And so the Stormwater Fund is giving $180,000 to make up the difference of what we had been planning to replace and setting aside to replace with what it will need to replace to get a whole Vector, which I believe has been ordered and on back order. Sure, sure, we talked to it. It's going to be great. I'm sure you'll have lots of questions on this.
So sewer lining, we are doing it currently. Right now, we have a company in here, they're doing their lining Burlington right now, just north of the trucks. We've seen them out there or not, but they've been doing that. So that's an area, we've had numerous failures and now they're lining it, so we won't have any more issues out there. And as far as the new Vector truck, we are going out there Monday to meet with the contractor or the, I'm sorry, the person who's building it for us. We're going to make sure that they did everything right, they're going to test it for us so we can see it's going to be tested. If everything, the test goes well on Monday, we'll have it by next Friday, like a week from, yeah, a week from tomorrow. We should have it by the end of the week, if everything goes well.
So if we, if we end, if everything goes well and we get it before April 30th, it won't be expensed on a next year's budget, it'll be this year's budget. If not, it'll be carried over to next year's budget.
That is the plan.
As it's listed here, just in case we have to do it.
Correct, that is the plan, yep.
And then Mike had put together previously, and I think shared with the board, a long list of all the projects we've done in the past. In this presentation, I've just kind of renumerated them, I'm not going to go through and list them all, but you can just see all the things that we've done in 2016, 2017, 18, 19, 20, and 21. And then upcoming in the budget is, are these items that we've, you know, at least kind of the big picture items we've highlighted for stormwater budgeted projects. You know, it's 61st and Cumner. The Linden Norfolk is largely a placeholder because we want to make sure we set aside the money, but we're not even in a position to start working on that at this point. So that's there, we've got a few designs that you can see out there. And again, the designs that we're doing now, obviously are going to have larger construction costs. And so that's good examples of why we want to have a little bit of excess money left over, that 4.3 million we talked about. And then you can also see the Ashford Stabilization, 63rd and Richmond, kind of some final costs with that. So any questions about any stormwater-related stuff while Mike's still up here?
A quick question, Mike, like 61st Cumner, partially that is going to, I'm assuming it'll be funded by a county grant or...
25%.
So that doesn't include though...
The grant does not include that cost, right? So it'll be closer to eight, 800, 850, somewhere around there is what it's, the final cost should be. And we're going to get, but we have to pay for that upfront and they reimburse us once the project's done.
Nice, great.
Yeah, but that was something that you worked on, being on the committee, helped get that approved for the village. So he gets all the credit for that, not me.
Yes, thank you for that.
And it's not...
Big application like this thing, I didn't do anything but say yes.
Sorry, what were you going to say?
No, I was just, there's 61st and the, what's going on with the road and each side of the street there. But this issue goes all the way through all those yards, all the way up to 59th Street that the county also wants, you know, attention with, so we're working on it all.
It's a big project, yeah.
Correct, yep. And then Oakwood Outlet, just to give you an update with that. The Homewares Association, you know, President Matt Johnson was in here a couple of weeks ago talking about at the Public Works Committee meeting. They have hired a consultant to review it, you were out there. And they're going to get three proposals, give us three options, you know, how, what they're going to do. And then it's going to be up to us if we want to get involved with participating in any of their options. But unfortunately for them, you know, the big part of it, the outlet part of it is going to be on the Homewares Association, but we might step in and do some other improvements, give us an opportunity to do some improvements that we've been wanting to do for a while. So we'll have to look at that.
Yeah. I mean, as a committee, you looked into allowing us to help assist them investigate what it would be. So to me, this amount represents looking for other opportunities in my mind, at other locations than where the existing one is so that if we already know the difficulties of maintaining it, where it's at, are there better, if you were starting over, if you were simcity in this, you know, where would you put the outlet?
Not in someone's house. That's the first I've ever seen it. That flow rate's crazy and that poor lady that lives there, oh my God. That's the first I've ever seen it, that flow rate's crazy and that poor lady that lives there, oh my gosh.
So this is engineering investigation.
Yeah, cool.
All right, the next item that was also requested at that January meeting was some information about crossing guards. So I've got the budget figures here about the expense and the proposed revenues at 50%. But I'll have Deputy Chief Thompson talk a little bit. Some of the requests that were kind of listed at that January meeting were a little bit more about the operations of it. Where do we have them, are we fully staffed? Cause we know that was an issue of trying to be fully staffed for a while, so I'll turn it over to Deputy Chief Thompson.
I know you mentioned a few specific questions there, so I will run down what I have as far as, uh, locations that we have staffed. We have Chicago and Warwick, we have a, uh, crossing guard, Cass and Norfolk, Cass and Burlington, um, the tracks. We have Cass and Richmond by Holy Trinity. We have two at Marker School there at Cass and 59th, and then one at Cass and 65th. So those are the locations we currently, uh, have staffed. As far as them being fully staffed, doesn't sound like they're there yet, they're doing their best. I've maybe received, I've actually only received that I can remember, one call since school came back in January of not being able to have, uh, somebody at a crossing. So that's a lot better than we had at the start of the year in the fall. We had several of those where even I was out there, I had run out there for a little bit of time. Our new rep from Andy Frame has said that they're doing a better job at getting it staffed. They currently have one person that is, I'm, she didn't say field training, but going through, uh, the process now that looks promising that would make our crossings fully staffed. So they are having some retention and recruitment issues, but it sounds like they're getting to the point, at least with our account, where all of our crossings are staffed, uh, at all the times that we need them. Is there another specific question? I know Spencer mentioned the 50%. We've let the schools know that we plan on, we let them know last year, um, that we planned on going up to 50% this year of a, a cost sharing. We didn't get any complaints from them. Of course, once the school year is over, the invoices go out, so that's when we would probably field those complaints. But when we told them, there wasn't, wasn't any pushback, anybody seemed too upset about it. So our plan, unless it had changed, was 50% this year. Our contract runs through next school year with Andy Frame, and we're planning on 50% again next year. And then after that, we'll be open for a contract, and I don't know if there will be further discussion from the board about if we want to, to continue in a contract or if we want the schools more involved or, or how we want it to be.
What percent will we add?
I mean, years ago, we were 100%, but last year, this year, um, we're at 75, we were covering 25, we're covering 75, the school's paying 25, right?
Last year was 25%. Correct, and we had doubled that for this year. So this will be the first year that we were, were asking for 20, from 25 to 50%.
And again, the, the responsibility really falls on the school districts, but we're, we're providing and assisting with it.
That's certainly our position.
That's our thought.
I, I, I think they would.
Well, there's two components, it's the service for the students, but it's on public right away. So if they're doing traffic management, we certainly want to have involvement with how that's handled, but that's different than funding all of it.
But the, the, you want some, as they say, skin in the game, because they, if it was 100% us, they'd have crossing guards at every corner everywhere.
Yeah, and I think we've, I think in the past when they have asked, can we add crossing guards? We have said, if you wanna pay the 100% of the cost at a crossing guard, that's easy. If you want us to pay 50%, we have to talk. And so that's kind of what we said is, look, we've established the crossings we have, but we could talk about other options. I know the school district looked at that for a while.
Uh, I, I believe, uh, Manning School was looking at that for a little while. They were wanting to, to add a guard here or there, um, and actually contacted the company before contacting us. And then the company contacted us and said, okay, well, we're gonna have to amend the contract. And we were like, I don't even know what you're talking about. So at that time, we had, we had told them that, like, you know, we, we wanna know or where you're going to have these people. They ended up not, um, adding anybody extra. But we did tell them that we pay for, for however many guards we have on the contract. If, if you guys wanna change a location, we'll definitely enter in those discussions with you and we're good with that. If you feel it's a safety issue for the students or the people crossing, and you wanna change one of the crossings, um, you can absolutely entertain that. But I think they decided to go status quo after.
And that's all administration, that's not parent groups or anything?
Well, administration contacts us, but I, I assume that they're getting something from the parents, either a complaint that they bring it to us. Because the school administrators are usually out around just the school, they don't get over to like, say, Cass and, um, Norfolk. You don't see the administrators over there seeing how the crossing looks or anything like that, so.
But it make, I mean, it kind of makes more sense to me that the police department or the village controls the crossing intersections because of the understanding of the whole thing. It can't be every single corner where, you know, whatever way a kid wants to walk, it has to be what makes, you know, a collector, you know, collects more kids to go this route, and this is the designated route.
I think, I think some of the conversation that started with this new school year was, there was some sort of redistricting maybe? Now kids were going to have to, um, cross Cass Avenue. Kids used to go to Miller, now maybe went to Manning, I don't know all the details to it. But I think that was some of, uh, what the discussion was about having additional guards, um, early in the school year. But it seems like those have kind of worked themselves out. I'm not sure exactly how they, they worked them out, but, um, they're working them out with the current amount of crossing guards that we have.
Thank you. So now we're getting to the last section, or almost the last section, where we're talking about things that weren't specifically asked about, but if we're kind of covering the different priorities that the board has set, we wanna talk about some of the different things those have on the budget. So the first one on that list is sidewalks. I know it's been a topic of interest for the village board, so we've got kind of a list of some of the stuff we have in the budget about sidewalks. I will say the Adams and Linley, that those together, those are both just design, and those are the ones in Newfield Manor. And I know there's been a lot of people who strongly say, yes, we want sidewalks. And we had somebody come and say, don't do anything about sidewalks. And right now, we just have in the budget for the design for that, the thought would be, we would be designing it to be able to find out what the full-fledged cost would be, and then at a later determine, time, we'd make the determination of going out to bid and that kind of thing.
And Spencer, the design, Steve, is, um, both sides of the street and what determine?
Yeah, so some of them, and so there's several streets listed, and it would be looking for the best one side of the street. Like we do village-wide, the, the goal is to get them on one side everywhere. But on Adams itself, because it feeds from the east and the west, and the difficulty with getting through down to the south, that is being designed so that it can be on both sides of the street, just Adams itself, but its length.
And the South Womet is a complete project then, the 720?
South Womet is, um, yeah, and that is in there based on a, an open forum presentation we had, I don't know, maybe a year ago, where they came in and requested it, so we weren't prepared to do that. But this is to accommodate that, should we wanna proceed with it.
From 55th to Richmond, or all the way to Quincy?
All the way to Quincy.
All the way to Quincy.
55th to Quincy, they do exist on one side of the street, so this would be a location even before getting into the blocks that have no sidewalk. You know, we're talking about doing a second side on one street.
Well, there's a lot of sidewalks that don't connect on Womet, and that's the new homes, we're required to put it in front, so.
Yeah, I'm not disputing that it's worthy, it's just, uh, atypical how we approach sidewalks so far.
So community safety was another one of the priorities that was identified as a short-term priority, so we wanted to kind of talk through that. We've talked about a big piece of it with regards to retention already, but here's a couple of other items of note that are included in the budget for this year. So we've got those there, any questions on that?
Chief? Both chiefs, look, look at it, all four of you guys. On the license plate readers, is that something that our confiscated money can pay for, or is that not directly related to an officer?
We're talking about the DEA program?
Yeah.
So one thing I will note about the DEA program is that during the pandemic, it's also taken a big hit in terms of revenues. And so we're hopeful that it may eventually pick up again, but right now it's pretty low in revenues and it's basically paying for itself on a little tiny bit more. So we're, we're using a little bit of it this year, but we're trying to not put too much into it.
Criminals aren't traveling anymore.
Nothing like being optimistic for a bus, huh? So legalized cannabis. That's it, there's no more.
Other questions?
Can I ask a question?
Oh, sure.
Under community safety.
Yeah.
Is that where the two light trailers that the fire department would be looking at would come in? Because it's.
I'm the chief.
No?
No, we did not, uh, put the two light trailers into the budget, the 40,000, as, uh, Dave Weiss wanted. We're looking online through the Department of Defense website to replace those. Uh, we're still actively always looking to get, I'll say free from the Department of Defense, but currently, uh, one of my battalion chiefs is looking online for those for nothing.
Cause I'm kind of concerned about the quality of one of them, it was having a lot of issues staying on. And we use those for a lot of issues, not only special events, but you're called out to bring them to fire situations and.
Yeah, the last, uh, they had that beer festival up there. The problem that that generator has is it doesn't have enough kilowatts to supply what they were trying to plug into it, is why that kept shutting off, so Virgil and his staff looked at all that, uh, but they were just trying to put too much power into it. Now, we do have those big army generators that are still sitting at the village garage, but those are very costly to retrofit with all the cables and all that. We did have the light towers here for our 100th anniversary, they ran no issues. Uh, they've gone to many communities during the storms and up in Bensonville and Itasca, no issues. It's just when we start to plug other items into them, if we just use it strictly for lighting, we're okay. If we're trying to use the generator portion and put more power, that's when we shut it off, so. But we are actively looking, but I did make that decision not to put them in the budget for this year.
Okay.
That's on me.
Thank you.
I, I will say the Department of Defense agreement that the board approved a few years ago is, excuse me, been a, a big benefit. There's a lot of equipment that we're able to get that the federal government is sort of saying they're done with it and then setting it aside so, you know, fire departments can utilize it. And so it's been a, it's been a nice benefit, so I'm glad we're taking a look at that. I will say we have money in the vehicle replacement program. If we end up needing to utilize that, we always appropriate a little bit more than we budget for. So if we need to, we can look at something like that, but it does make a lot of good sense to try to find it as low as cost possible that we can. So I appreciate that, chief, of you showing a good example of saying, here's how we try to make each dollar go as far as it possibly can. So thanks for that. Other community safety questions?
How many license plate readers is that, just one?
Two.
Just two. Eight of them, huh?
Maybe, maybe, maybe it's.
Cool, I'm glad we're getting them, great. Feels like every town around us is getting them, so.
Well, it's part of a coordinated network.
588 is just gonna, Oakboro, Oakboro, Terry, everybody's gonna get some. I think that's great, get more of them.
The next slide just shows a little bit about some of our community outreach and some of the pieces that are in the budget for that. I will say is, we know we've been using the Neighbors Magazine for a while, and then they've now gone out of business, we're doing our own newsletter. We're increasing the page count a little bit, but part of it is some things we already had in Neighbors that were kind of comp to us at that point. So our newsletter, to be the full 12 pages, is going up to 38,700, so it's a slight increase from where it was. Just wanted to mention that, cause I know it had been brought up previously to the board about the newsletter. We've got a request for graphics design, communication services, we'd have that in the past. I think it kind of went away for a while when we were trying to trim money during the pandemic, but is a useful item. And then we've got money set aside for a marketing branding study to be able to be done at some point during the year.
Was that in this year's budget too?
I think that it was.
Is this a carry forward?
Yeah, so I believe this is a carry forward. I know we've had it in the past.
It is.
I think it was a smaller amount, it might have been the same, it might have been the same amount this year. I think in the past, it was a smaller amount, and we needed to increase it, but this year it's carried over, yep. Other questions on that slide? All right, the next one talks about trees, and so just wanted to kind of let you know what's in the budget or, you know, currently for that. So our annual pruning, as you recall, last year budget workshop, we talked about how that's typically 80,000 and how the goal is typically to try to get, you know, ideally five years to prune all the trees in town, kind of every five years. And I think when we looked at, if we took our current cost at 80,000, it was closer to like 15 or 20 years to trim everything in town. And so I think the thought is if we're doubling that amount, we're gonna be getting a lot closer to kind of where the goal is for the pruning of trees. In addition to increasing our annual amount, this year, we didn't do, we didn't spend any of that money for the pruning of trees. And so the request is to say, let's take the money we would've spent this year, and so next year, we're gonna spend a lot more doing a lot of the town, getting a lot of it done, and then be able to get on more of that rotational cycle.
With contract work?
This is all contractual? Yep, contractual, yeah.
How about the additional 104 trees, do we plant that?
I believe we plant a lot of the annual fall and spring planting, but my understanding is the additional trees includes a lot of costs for others to plant them because we just don't have enough staff to take care of.
We don't plant anymore, right?
Michael comments that?
The annual planting we do. But there are some contractual plantings that we also do.
Thank you.
So it's a little bit of both.
Yeah.
And the reason, just to give you a little background, why the pruning is so, we're so far behind is because of Emerald Ashbore. We focus so much of making sure that the trees that had Emerald Ashbore were down. Now we got, we kind of got away from pruning, so we're trying to play catch-up. And that's why we're asking for this additional money to try to get caught up. And then once we're caught up, like Spencer said, we'll be on a, a regular basis after that to make sure the whole town gets trimmed or pruned at, you know, a regular basis. Uh, cause the last couple of years, unfortunately, we just couldn't, we just couldn't get out there, you know? So that's why we're gonna ask for this additional money to get this done, because we still, we just finally got caught up with all the Emerald Ashbore trees. So, you know, we're in a good spot with that, but we, we had to sacrifice doing the pruning, so that's why we're asking for, you know, have a contractor do this for us.
When we get caught up, are we gonna do that internally or are we?
That's the plan, yep. That's the plan is to keep up, we're too far behind now to try to get, I mean, we could do, we still, we're doing it even, you know, we still do it every day, but we can't get caught up. It's kind of like roads, once you get behind, it's hard to get caught back up, you know?
You know, is it last year or the year before, they did Newfield Manor?
Right.
And they're, you know, they took a beating, those guys took a beating about the, the skill level there?
Yeah.
Those trees look great.
Yeah.
No, they really look good.
Yeah.
You know, there's nothing hanging.
But it's a stark change, it's alarming just on the first day, but then it's normal soon thereafter.
Yeah, look, it looks real good. Are these 104 like new locations or like replacements that are needed that are like we're backed up on?
Both, you know, it's still, some of, we're still trying to replace some of the Emerald Ashbore that we couldn't get replaced. And then some of them are just new plantings that we have locations where we need to put new trees, where trees have just died on their own. Not necessarily from Emerald Ashbore, but just from trees from other disease that we might have, or a tree getting blown over. We lost a tree today from the wind, so that tree's gonna be on the.
It's just a constant.
Yeah, it's constant, storms and stuff like that, we lose trees, you know, constantly, we have to replace those and try to keep up, so we don't get too far behind on that.
Nice.
Right, we, we do have some funds set aside in community development for some different plans with that. Uh, there was a request from a board member to make sure the budget included a, money for a comprehensive plan. If we decided we wanted to go that route, it's been a few years since we've done one. I don't, so we'll kind of make that determination, but we wanted to make sure it's in the budget so that if we do decide to go that direction, we have money set aside for that. I would say it's a guestimate based on our past one, but we hope it's a good amount.
Yeah, I think we paid half of them at first.
Yeah, it was about 100,000 for that one, and which was about, you know, if you add in a certain percentage each year, it kind of goes up and up. So we think that'll be enough, hopefully.
So a lot of people are mentioning comprehensive plan now.
Yes, a lot of people are talking about comprehensive plan in the community with development or two. And we also have some money for a downtown sub-plan, so to do some kind of plan about the downtown. But at the same time, we've also got a lot of things going on in the downtown, and it would make sense to have some analysis done there looking at design guidelines and a lot of other things along with that.
Those little topics that we're working on together, just approach them all at once, uh, the, the sign, um, ordinance, and then how it might apply differently, so anything from the, the code enforcement topics? So, anything from the code enforcement topics that have come up to parking, to design guidelines and the, you know, the grant structure too. We're just gonna pull it all together into a subcomponent of a, of a bigger master plan. Actually, we should do the downtown subplan with or without the comm plan, but they're both needed.
I wanted, I just want to add a little bit to that. I think both of those are important. I don't know if this is enough money or not. I'll leave it up to, you know, Steve and Spencer. But my point was that I wanted to see this board and this mayor develop these things because we all know how long they take. And I don't want to lose the expertise of the people in the room. You know, when Mike steps away, there goes tons of experience. And then there's other people that got a lot of years in and I want to take advantage of that before there's a transition. It's a good board. We don't fight, we work. And I want to, you know, capitalize on that because it is a long-term, everything we do takes forever and three extra days. And maybe then two more years, but let's start it now and see it through so that we can, you know, see some real progress there. You know, everybody's been talking about, talking about it, talking about it. And when Spencer said the financial picture is pretty good, I'm going, yeah, this is good.
It is a good.
Forward thinking, you know?
Yep.
So.
It's good to be proactive and plan for the future, absolutely. All right, the next slide, we wanted to make sure you're aware of our vehicles. And so, we've got some increases in costs. You're aware of the ladder truck lease and the increase with that. We've got increased, a little bit increased costs for patrol replacements. A lot of that is just the old equipment doesn't work on the new vehicles and they are shifting a little bit in terms of kind of the design and those things. So, there's a little bit of increased cost there, not a huge amount. You'll notice we've got about one point five million dollars worth of vehicles that we are trying to order in this year that we haven't been able to get because they're on back order with all the logistic and supply chain issues. So, we just talked about the factor, which is I think right around, you know, four hundred thousand dollars worth of that amount. We might get that this year, so that might really only be one point one million dollars worth that are carried over into next year. Another three hundred thousand or so of that, I believe, is an ambulance. We've got a few other vehicles that are kind of in that group of ones that are back ordered. The new vehicles that are coming up for replacement in this year are again through more patrol vehicles. One, what we call a non-squad, that's typically used by like detectives. And in this specific case, I believe it was one where the vehicle replacement plan called for it to be replaced several years ago. And each year, we've kind of said, does it really need to be replaced yet? Does it really need to be replaced yet? And this year, it really does need to be replaced now per our mechanic. So, we are finally doing that one, even though ideally, you know, based on our initial plan, we had the money set aside to do it a couple of years ago, but we held off on it until we really needed to. We've got our standard replacement of one fire vehicle and one lease payment. And then we've got a couple of pickups at Public Works that need to be replaced this year as well. So, those are all included in there. Any questions on vehicles? All right, so the other priority we had was governance, so here's a couple of items of interest, I think, for governance. One thing I wanted to talk about is, and I mentioned at the beginning, we did this new less conservative budgeting method where we look to see, you know, are there any areas where we can reduce what the budget is just to make sure we're able to provide as much service as we can within this budget and be a little bit less conservative in terms of how we set aside for our expenses. And so, with that, the departments as a whole, we're able to kind of work together and find ways to make it all work. And we ended up trimming about two hundred and eighty-five, two hundred and eighty-four, almost two hundred and eighty-five thousand in that method of budgeting. So, that was a, I think, a good success and a good tribute to the departments and their ability to, to do that. We've also listed a few of the things we have going on, including entity-wide planning. That's a kind of, could be referred to as strategic plan. That's kind of how we've looked at it. Nowadays, there's trends to kind of look at it in terms of less of a strategic plan, but more principles-based or something. I think agile strategy is a more common thing. So, whatever we end up really calling it, it's what we've historically called the strategic plan. But I just call it entity-wide planning in this one. Also, some money set aside for looking at some fire analysis and then some facilities improvements and repairs. So, on to infrastructure. Want to talk a little bit about water infrastructure. We've covered the item about no water rate increase and we've got some lists here of some of the things that we've got coming up, some things that are under design. I will note on the Liberty Park, this three hundred thousand is, I think, to help kind of finish up some of the initial estimates and analysis on the project. With that, if, if we do go forward with the project, we'll be, should be able to get that reimbursed through a special service area. The big piece of the actual design of the project itself, like the full design, is, you know, typically it's right around ten percent of the cost of projects who are probably looking at closer to like a million dollars. But we would not start spending that million dollars until we got a good confirmation that Liberty Park is really interested. I believe in the next couple of months, we're gonna be trying to hold a meeting with them, putting together a lot of information so that those residents are able to look at the potential project, see the impact to them and make a decision of whether or not they're interested in that and the extra cost that would be on their property taxes to pay for it. If they are and they indicate they're interested in it, then we can move forward with that design. If they're not, then we would not be spending that large million dollars. So, if they're not interested, we might be out that three hundred thousand, but we wouldn't be out the million.
The county is the lead agency with the residents, right?
Well, I would say it's kind of a combination between us and the county. So, the county's involved. The county wants to make sure the residents are taken care of because they're, are the county's residents. But we're also very involved with the project. I think of the meeting would be a joint meeting with us and the county presenting.
That's correct.
If that project was designed and they didn't buy into it at this time, that design would still be valid, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's a, just phase one design, so it was done for purposes of identifying the scope of work and, you know, getting a rough estimate for what we're in for. So, there would be no hard creating plans, you know, until the, the special service area was approved. I'm, I'm assuming that's how it would go. We figured out no other way to, you know, afford that. And to the other point, it is the residents of Liberty Park that have been approaching us about, you know, how could we help? But they are county unincorporated residents, so the, the county is that interface with that population. But we're, it's in our planning area. It's our, our service area to be.
Do we have like a start date for the North Water Tower?
We have, still working on, we're, we're working on the real estate agreement right now.
So, we're still there.
Yeah, but it's in design, right? North Tower? Yeah.
Yeah, and then the next step is, I think it's gotta go through state approval for revolving fund. And my understanding is that can take a couple of years, I think, right? Like a year or two? What? Eighteen months?
So, it's still a couple of years away.
Yeah, the goal is hopefully fall of twenty twenty-three or spring of twenty twenty-four.
That revolving fund is interest-free?
We, we have some projects that, when they were doing an interest-free loan, right now, they're just low-interest loans. So, they're not interest-free anymore. We got a special deal a few years ago, but.
One year, it was, there was a little bit of forgiveness with it, so.
Well, that's true.
That was a ARRA that President Obama passed. But, um, yeah, the, the thing with the state revolving fund is that we have the permit in right now. They're reviewing it now. Once they, and once they review it, they lock it into that amount. So, right now, it's one point eight two percent, which is pretty low. And once we get approval, they lock that in. So, even if we don't design it for like two more years, we're still locked in at that percentage, which is nice. So, it won't go up if we can't get it done, you know? But there, there's a time limit on that. We have so much time to get it designed, get it constructed, all of that after it's been approved.
What's the pay schedule? How many years payback?
Um, it's really up to us.
Yeah, I feel like we've done twenty previously, I think.
Yeah, we did twenty for Burlington and Lincoln, but we could do thirty. I mean, you could go up as high as thirty if you needed to.
Similar to a bond, bonds.
Yeah.
It, it's really the best deal in town, though. I mean, you can't go to a bank and get one point eight two percent.
No, certainly not with bonds either.
Mike, just a technical question on that. Just, once the North Tower is done, does the other tower here, is there a benefit to that?
The other tower? What do you mean? The one that's?
Yeah, downtown here.
The two ground storage tanks?
Right.
Yeah, those are, those are, serve a different purpose. So, those, that water gets pumped from our two P A stations to our treatment plant and they get, they get stored in those ground storage tanks. And then we pump that water out to our residents every day. The elevated storage tanks are also used for storage, but they're also used for pressure. So, the, the ground storage tanks don't really supply too much pressure, but the elevated storage tanks do. And with us having all this construction going on, possibly on the north side of town, we need that additional pressure and that additional volume to make sure we have enough, you know, water up there.
So, it's a little bit of storage and a lot of pressure.
Correct.
The height of the tower.
Right.
The volume, the size, the bulb is for the storage you need and then how high up in the air you put it is based on the pressure and, and all three will.
Have to be at the same level.
Have to match.
So, the one on the north side is gonna be forty feet higher than the one on the south side of town.
Wow.
But it'll be really tall.
Steve will see it from his.
Yeah, but we won't be eliminating any tower. This is an additional tower, not eliminating.
It just improves the whole system.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, we have to keep enough for two days' worth of storage in case there's an emergency. And right now, we're right at that right now. We're right at where we need to be. But if we, with all this additional construction going on, we would, we need that tower to meet that demand.
Does Liberty Park, would affect, that tower assist Liberty Park with pressure or?
Yeah, that would definitely help that whole area up there with pressure significantly.
If we go through with the project.
If we go.
They're on their own system now, not connected to anything.
But it would assist if we.
Yes, correct.
Yeah. And if they became on our system, we definitely need that to have that much storage available.
Right.
Yeah. But we were planning to do it anyway without even considering that, but.
See, the mayor was trying to add it to the S S A and you just.
Sorry, Mayor. We, I think we did ask the county about it and they did say, wait a minute, you're doing that?
All right.
No, that doesn't count.
We, we weren't planning this already, yes.
Yeah, we did ask about that, though. It was a good hope.
But knowing that, you know, Liberty Park is, was a potential. I said it was in our, it's been our planning area forever.
It's a benefit to them. Good.
So, this slide just lists some other infrastructure items. You can see we've got a one point four million dollar amount set aside for water fuel resurfacing program coming up. And you can see some of the other big highlights. I'll say there's other projects that are on that full list that you've got, but these are, you know, some of the ones that I wanted to make sure got called to your attention.
And then?
Are these residential alleys, the Mike Ramsey design, the blacktop concrete? It's nice.
Yeah.
That's great.
When will we announce the M F T project? Cause that's kind of.
Sorry, Mike. Residents. Stay up for one more slide.
I got, is, is reviewing it now. We should have something early May.
We'll post that online and.
Yeah, we want to get, we want to go out to bid sometime early June if possible and then start construction earlier. As you all know, it took, you know, we kind of got a lead start last year and we were scrambling to try to get it done before winter time. And we, we did get a lot of complaints about that, especially on North Cass. But our goal now is to hopefully go out to bid in June, start construction, hopefully right after Fourth of July and then get it done before, you know, before October.
So, he's not gonna announce the list until the day after he's gone?
Yeah. No, but there's, there's a lot of streets that we, we're gonna be addressing that we've gotten a lot of complaints about.
It's based on priorities and also cost-wise, it's next to each other.
Yeah, that, that survey we do every year, we did it in twenty twenty, gives us a, a, you know, cost and an evaluation of which streets are most, you know, most of need. So, and we're addressing it off that list.
I have to say, since I lived here, I said I'd cast in Burlington's better. Never been nicer.
I know.
It's like I'm lost.
Could be on a flyer, right?
Yeah, right.
Isn't that the Arrowberry intersection?
It is.
They should put a street sign up there.
So, I will note on that list of projects you've got, as you can see, just flipping through them, the two full pages worth, there's a lot of projects. And we've got the money to cover all these pieces of it. We don't have the time to do all of them. And so, some of these are just, we're setting aside the money to be able to make sure we earmarked it, but won't be able to do them all this year. So, right on this slide, we've got a couple that kind of come right off the bat of saying, we know we're probably not doing them this year. We're just setting aside the money. I think we've talked about each one of them before, but just wanted to make sure we've highlighted that. So, just because the project is on here doesn't mean it's necessarily gonna happen right away because there's so much to take care of. But we wanted to make sure we've earmarked all these different projects.
It's reflected in the budget, right? All these numbers?
Yes, all these numbers are reflected in the budget in that fifteen point eight million that we're transferring out to capital proj, that we're saying we could transfer out to capital projects if we did all these funds. Yep.
For the train station, does this kind of like with the stormwater grant, it doesn't take into account like metro funds or B N S F funds that are gonna be paying towards some of this?
So, these re, these really would be more just our costs. So, Metro would be doing the whole project. It would be their cost for like.
Our share.
Well, this would just be our share.
Okay.
Yep.
What's depot retail space? What does that mean? To like refinish it out to put in a coffee shop or something?
Yeah, to make it available for something like that. Obviously, before we, you know.
Utilities aren't on that side of the, of the building. So, it is to stub it out to make it available.
Okay.
Spirit clear.
There'd have to be a lot more conversation, you know, about whether or not we put something there and how we do that and how that all works. But we want to make sure we've got the money to stub it out so we could use it for something. Cause there's some extra space there that could be better utilized.
Maybe see how the ridership goes with all the parking and if we even need it.
Right.
Steve, did you say that the, there is no ticket lady at the train station anymore?
Yeah, it's my understanding she's already been relocated.
So, if that's the case, would they put retail on both sides?
Well, they, they, the one side was kind of a small space and they are retrofitting that. There's gonna be electronic versions of a ticket agent in the building. So, they, they, they're still maintaining their corner. But there, I think there should be one inside and one outside in their final plan, but that's two years down the line.
Okay. Thank you.
Get your Ventra app and skip it all.
All right, so just about the last section is now just kind of saying, now that we've seen sort of all the things that are in the budget, if there's things we want to take out, we can. If you want to make sure that four point three ends up being a little higher for, now that you've seen kind of some of the projects that we're just designing and not setting aside money to construct yet or if you've got other ideas, if we, if, if you wanted to raise that four point three a little bit more, then we've got some options we could talk about. I will say, unlike sometimes in the, you know, distant past where we were coming and saying, we're short money, you have to decide what to cut. We're at a balanced place. We're okay, I think, in terms of that four point three million. But if you guys wanted to make it a little bit more, we've got that option as well. And didn't want to be presumptuous to say, we're not cutting anything, you know? So, we wanted to kind of give you guys that opportunity.
That could go up four million without one North Cass probably, or not quite four million.
Yeah, not quite, but another three million. So, yeah.
And we go into that.
If things didn't go through with one North Cass, you know, that four million turns into more like seven million probably.
Okay.
Yep. So, the next two slides just show some things that are in the budget that you could potentially look at reducing. I will say that first one, the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the H V A C filter is included in the budget because we had talked to you guys about it during kind of the height of the pandemic and we had mentioned that we were gonna be including it in this upcoming budget, so that's why it's there. Staff is thinking we probably won't spend it, even if it stays in the budget. We've been kind of, first of all, there's been.
I can speak.
Some information about not dispel interest in it. You want to talk through it? Go for it.
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, we went into it and then when we were in the early points of the pandemic, there was a lot of throwing money at systems like this and we've been looking into it and the, using the grant money and how to apply it and doing that. But, I mean, I'll just simplify it. Even the people that do the installing are, you know, I don't, everybody likes work and income, but they, you know, are questioning the need. And, you know, depending on the system you use, the annual maintenance is, you know, extraordinary and it's not, you know, the benefit that we thought we were gonna get out of it. And then, and then as you come out of the pandemic, the, the excitement over it is less than it was before. But we can still invest and do it, but the, the return on investment is not appealing.
Is this a U V filter?
Either, you know, U V light or the, just actual filtration.
Well, I put one in my house and Corinne got COVID like around Christmas and I caught it from her with the filter on, so I say it's a.
Well, I mean, they've been incredibly successful at school. I mean, it's the reason that it's not like, there's no spread in any classroom at, at school is each classroom has like one of these Truhepa filter things running and, I mean, I, I don't know. And the research supports it, I guess, so.
I, I read a lot of this, you know, cause I work at a school, right? With no H V A C. I mean, they, they don't have any fresh air ventilation, which is part of a renovation that they need. But the science, the science says the stuff works in a laboratory test. But in actuality, out in the real world, it's not as effective and it is cost prohibitive. So, if, you know, if you're spending grant money to do it, that's one thing. But if you're spending tax dollars to do it, it's, it's not cost-effective.
Give you an idea on the maintenance, it's about six thousand dollars per building for the filters every year. So, if we have four, five buildings, you're looking at twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars just on the filters to.
Well, you're changing them four times a year too, right?
Right, exactly. So.
At least.
At least, right. And then, that's why, if you notice, there was duct cleaning in the couple of slides earlier. That's why we increased our duct cleaning, these buildings, so we're gonna make sure that we do more, be proactive on the duct cleaning every year. So, we just thought that was a better. So, um, we just thought that was a better solution than maybe spending the money on this. That's why we had that in there.
It is, it is.
And, and one option is we can leave it in there and if the pandemic picks up again and it becomes, you know, more necessary, then we could spend the money. Because, I mean, to your point, I think if, you know, if there were a lot of people in all the buildings with, like for schools and those kind of things, it might make more sense to invest in it. I don't know if it makes as much sense to invest in it for our current buildings and kind of our situations, but we could leave it in there just to make sure we can use it.
It's in the budget right now.
Yeah, it's in the budget.
Yeah. You want to look in about two years to see what's been cut out of their programs? The schools that put it in, they won't be maintaining it.
I mean, I'm reading totally the opposite of what you're saying in terms of like the research and the scientists that I'm following. So I'm, I'd like to talk to you about it more.
If you would send me that, that'd be great.
Yeah, I mean, I read an article this week about how filtration is like where we're going right now in terms of how to be better prepared for the future. And so I'm, I'm surprised to hear you guys saying that you don't want to do it.
Well, we're actually, it's actually in the budget.
Yeah.
These are just things that are in here that we're not going to spend it quickly until we're in a better place, understanding what that is and the value. So I'm just, it's why it's on a potential cut sheet, not that we're cutting it, just that we're still questioning it. But leaving it in the budget is so that we can be prepared to act on it if we're, when we get to that place.
Yeah, that makes sense. And maybe it's something to do with the, you know, what are the better types of filtration systems and maybe there's a different filtration system than the one that we were looking at and the people installing it, you know, maybe there's a better system. So maybe that's something to look into as well.
Yeah, I mean, people are still figuring it out, you know. My dentist wears up and down from the filter she has in Downers Grove and, you know, and I've been going since whatever and she hasn't had any issues, but I do hear, you know, the other side where a lot of.
It has to do with if you're retrofitting old equipment too, you know. I guess they'll all be geared in size.
I don't think anybody knows, yeah, what the heck happened.
Spencer, if we.
Well, you want to, I'm glad it's in there, I guess, because if we do find it helps, obviously you want to take care of staff with the right equipment and the right filtration that, that we need. I just, I don't know, I'm skeptical of it too.
We're not in a position where we have to cut.
No, we're not in a position where we have to cut it. If we wanted to, we could.
Yeah.
But yeah, there's certainly no need to cut it and it sounds like there's good reason to leave it in there.
Just leave it in, yeah.
And just another perspective, just looking at my, you know, historical sheet, we have not had a, you know, let alone whether or not you're passing it on anybody, but we haven't even had, you know, an instance in the Village Hall since last September.
Right.
So good practices are, 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 you know, as efficient as filtering the air too.
Jinxed your email.
Well, I, that's exactly why they're looking. Every time I bring it up, something happens.
We're going to get one tonight, 10 o'clock.
Okay.
So those are some other items listed on here as other facilities improvements that are on that list that could be considered. And then the next sheet shows more of the equipment and infrastructure stuff. So the salt dome that's, is in there here as a request, um, I don't think it got mentioned previously, but we've got it on here as an option for 800,000.
To replace the one at the street division that, you, you heard about it at Public Works Committee.
The Wilmatt sidewalks are on here and largely because to manager Ma's point, we have it on one side of the street and that's kind of been the goal for the other places in town. So if we needed to cut something and you guys wanted to get more money in that excess reserve, this would be something that we could do. But it's currently, again, still currently in the budget based on the requests from those residents. Uh, I've got some equipment listed on here and then the trees that we've already talked about. So if there is any interest in cutting any of these things or any of the other stuff we've talked about, just wanted to kind of put it out there if there are thoughts of cutting anything. Again, I don't know that, we're certainly not at a point where we say we have to cut anything, but just wanted to put it out there if there was anything you guys.
Balanced as it is, with all of this in there, a lot of this, what we're spending is the capital improvement side, so pumping a lot of money, you know, into the community at this point. But it's, the, the last thought goes back to the, the comfort with the 4.3 million dollar balance in the excess. That's an excess on top of the reserve, on top of the contingency, and this is on top of that. So if you're comfortable with that number, you know, it's nothing left to review. But if we want to build that, then we would go back to that potential list.
We met our goal of 20%, which our audience calls for, and then you got another 4.3 with the possibility increasing with other projects not going. Doesn't mean you even, if it's in the budget, we don't necessarily even have to do it if we decide later, just it stays in the budget but no expense.
Right. If it's not in the budget, then you can't consider it, you know, so it's a good point.
Yep.
Spencer get everything he wanted? Did you get everything you wanted? You got an award last week.
I, very true, thank you.
And it makes perfect sense to you what's proposed.
Yeah, I think what, what's in the budget makes sense. I think there's, yeah, good things in there and I would support it, stand behind it. I think we're okay with where it is. But again, if there's a desire to cut, more we can.
When do we actually vote on the, the budget?
Next week if there's nothing to adjust.
Yeah, if there's other questions or other information people need, we can always push it off two weeks after that. But the plan would be next week if we've got all the answers we need.
It's the last meeting before the, May 1st, the fiscal year, so ideally.
But again, if we leave it in there and we're balanced, we just, we can decide not to do it too.
Yeah, that's, that's very true. So we could say we're going to approve the budget, but if there are things that people want to have us not do, just because they're in the budget doesn't mean we have to do them. We can also talk about not doing them, even though they're in the budget. That's a good point there.
So I want to not necessarily conclude, certainly if you, you have any questions, but Spencer spent the first five minutes of the meeting thanking everybody else that was working on it.